Good evening, I'm calling the November 29th Amory City Council Meeting to Order. Rule call.
Uh, I guess, uh, Reiman Schneider.
Here.
Paulson.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Vickers.
Yes.
And Van Bler.
The rose between thorns, but yes.
Yes. I understand Tim is rushing back from Wisconsin Dell, so he will appear shortly, and I'm assuming Rick too. Chris, Vickers is going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chris. First item is the public hearing portion of the 2018 budget. Someone going to speak to that?
Um, sure, I can make some comments about the budget if you would like, and since it's a public hearing, if there are members of the public who want to talk about the budget or ask questions, they may do so as well.
Is it online?
No.
How will we have questions?
It hasn't been adopted, so it's not online. The, as the public notice stated, that there are copies of the budgets available at City Hall if people would like to obtain them, we have them. So, um...
You have any other questions?
Yes, I guess I'll speak from up here. So, ladies and gentlemen, members of the public, after a lot of hard work by city staff, department heads, and city council members, we have a proposed 2018 city budget for your consideration tonight. The way the numbers have worked out, I think the community will be appreciative of. Our 2018 proposed tax levy is decreased from last year. The dollar amount we're looking at is $1,829,487. Like I stated, that is a decrease from 2017 of .14%. However, the city's assessed value did drop last year by $536,400. So the mill rate will increase the city's portion of the mill rate. And of course, just as a disclaimer, all the numbers and everything I'm talking about are only the city, only the city portion, city specific, I'm not commenting on any of the other taxing entities. So, but because of the drop in the value last year, which was in the manufacturing category of our assessed property, and this was due to the Cardinal Glass appeal of their manufacturing assessment, because of that decrease, even though we have dropped our levy, our mill rate will be slightly up by .14%. What this would translate is about a dollar on your tax bill. If your home is valued at $100,000, this would be about a dollar in additional tax, is what our projection is. Also, something to mention is that everything I'm talking about is before the tax incremental levy is plugged in. We don't know what that levy is, and we don't know what those numbers are until the Department of Revenue tells us what they are. I'll be filing online all of the levy information from the various taxing entities, and they will tell me what we actually collect after the tax increment is calculated. So there's a few changes to the budget document this year. One of those changes is that the way we allocate employee benefits and wages to funds and labor accounts, we've changed a little bit the way employees are accounting for their time on their time cards. That gives us a more authentic view of where their time is actually spent. It's more accurate rather than estimating, we have real numbers to work with. So that will change the look of that a little bit. Last year's budget document had the Community Investment Plan, or the Capital Improvement Plan, as part of the budget document. We didn't do that this year because it is time for us to review that and update it. That's a living document that is periodically needs council review. So with that, you can also see off from what we had in the paper, we have a balanced budget. Our expenditures are down 0.826%. Our revenues are down 0.826%, giving us a balanced budget. As I mentioned, our tax levy is down 1.37%. With that, if anybody has any questions that they want to ask me, the city council was very active in attending the various committee meetings where we were working on the budget, so they have a very good idea and overview of how the budget process worked this year, and what projects the city will be doing and looking at, and how the money is being spent, and we're very active in that.
Do you have any questions for Fran?
Nope. Okay. If there aren't any questions, then I will take a seat.
Thank you, Fran.
Last year we got a copy of the document when I asked. Can we get a copy?
Oh, of course.
Because last year we got one when we walked in.
Oh, okay, certainly. Yes, and we are maybe perhaps slightly less organized due to some time constraints and staffing constraints we've struggled with this file, but yeah, certainly we'll have a copy that you can have. Happy to do it, and then after the budget's adopted, then it'll get out online.
Assuming they adopt this evening, it'll be online tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Then maybe you don't need to.
Okay. No worries, whatever.
All right, moving on from the public hearing. Resolution 05-2017 to adopt the budget. Are there any other marked questions or comments?
I move to adopt the budget as chairman.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the 2018 budget. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carried.
We do need a roll call vote on that.
We need a roll call. Thank you, Fran.
We do need a roll call vote on that.
Okay.
So, Van Bler come?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
And Reiman Schneider?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item five, another public hearing on the matter of state and federal aid and preliminary environmental assessment for the improvements at the Amory Municipal Airport.
This agenda item is to follow up with Jay Gregg's appearance at our November 1st meeting, where Jay went in depth and gave us a detailed analysis of the items that are in the airport petition and project plan. And then, as part of being able to qualify for the federal funding for the airport, we need to formally hold a public hearing, and we need to formally adopt the resolution to petition the federal government for those funds.
Okay.
And Jay apologizes, he can't be here tonight, he's having his knee replaced.
Okay. Well, we've got two people from the Airport Commission. Either one of you guys want to say anything about this?
It was all brought up the last meeting.
Yeah, I guess I assume it was all done.
Okay. All right, then I will entertain a motion for Resolution 06-2017, petitioning for the Secretary of Transportation for the airport improvement aid.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Do we need a roll call on this one, Fran?
No, you do not.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve the transportation aid. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Appointment of the poll workers for 2018, 2019.
Yes.
Yes.
Under state statutes, we are required every two years to appoint poll workers for a term of service. We are looking at having a pretty big election year in 2018. We'll be having a minimum of five elections and potentially seven elections. We have a primary coming up in December of this year. Because that's within 2017, those poll workers appointments still stand, but we do need to reappoint our poll workers going into the 2018-19 term. So anytime I get a chance to give a shout out to the poll workers, electric workers here in the city of Amory, I want to do that. They do a great job, we're happy to have them, they're very conscientious and civic and community minded, so I just want to throw that out there as well. As you can see, they are people who have served as poll workers in the past, and then we make sure also that they're adequately trained according to statute as well. So, that would be it.
Okay. So there's no action we need to take?
Just to approve the list as it was submitted.
What is the list?
Should be in your Dropbox.
Ah, okay.
I can read the names if you would like, if you're having trouble accessing that.
I just got into something else.
You got it? Okay. It is Wendy Bachman, Jerry Benaz, Mary Bolter, Karen Christopherson, Kathy Hagan, Lois Kressel, Diane Lucas, Kathy Maxon, Dick Pelth, Julie Reiman Schneider, Dolores Schultz, Dick Schultz, and Kathy Siriordan.
I'll make a motion to approve the list as you has presented here in our packet, just right out.
Seconded.
Okay. More? Motion made and seconded to approve the poll workers. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Operator's license?
Yes, we had one applicant for an operator's license for Ms. Walter, who's working at Countryside. The chief of police did the background check that she passed, and she's met the educational requirements, so I would recommend that her operator's license be approved.
I'll make that motion to approve the operator license for Stephanie Walter, Countryside.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to approve the operator's license. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. Questions from the public regarding the, any agenda items so far? Kim and I decided that we probably don't need to go into closed session, so we are going to, okay? All right, so we are going to go on with the, let's see, 2018 Employee Benefits and Retirement? What was that?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council, members of the audience. When I first started, we talked about the possibility of doing PTO, which is paid time off, and basically, for the information of the audience and people watching tonight's council meeting, paid time off is really a combination of leave benefits, and those leave benefits would be sick and vacation. Oftentimes, people use their vacation and the sick time stacks up because it's traditionally just been for when you're sick, and so they have many more hours in their sick bank than they do vacation bank. And, oh, several years ago, about 10 years ago, there was a movement to combine those into PTO, or paid time off, and it still is something that's occurring in most municipalities and county governments, and perhaps the state, I'm not sure, but a lot of cities are still working towards developing a PTO. So that's the combination of paid and vacation, so that people, the theory behind it is that people who are working in, or in, at a job are usually adults and can manage their own leave benefits, and so a lot of times, people will say they have, they need a sick day, they're not feeling well, but they really need extra time off for vacation, or something come up, and they need the time. So this is a way for employees to manage their own leave benefits, and once they've exhausted all their leave benefits that they've accrued during a year, there is no more allocation of any kind of paid time off. Once they've hit the max and they've used all that they have, they have to wait until they start accruing them again. And so there's a way that that accrual is taken care of, and I contacted the cities of Baldwin, River Falls, and the city I worked at previously when I first started working with PTO in Minnesota, and all three do have PTO leave benefits programs, and the one that I worked with in the village of St. Anthony, still using their PTO, and I think I did it about 15 years ago, so, and the staff still apparently appreciates the fact that they get to manage their own time. So that being said, and I think the city of Baldwin, in addition to using vacation and sick time as PTO, they also roll in their floating holidays and any holiday time into the PTO. I didn't do that, I have never heard of that before, we can certainly do that if the council is willing, but I just, I feel that PTO is a leave benefit that's earned, and vacation and floating vacations aren't necessarily time earned, it's time granted to be with your family, and strictly to be used during the holidays that they were established for. But again, that's something that the council could consider doing as well. So I believe we put a lot of this information in the Dropbox for the council, so that is there to look at. And last week, I met with staff and we went over some of, we went over the proposed draft PTO and talked about some of the issues in a staff meeting, and this was a PowerPoint presentation that David and I worked on together to put this together for the staff. And basically, the last page before the question section shows how PTO will be accumulated or accrued by staff, and so there is a little bit of a formula, and so for the first, for the first year after accruing, you get 19 days accrued, and that's vacation and sick time combined. And so you would, so what I did is I multiplied 19 days by eight hours and got 152 hours of their leave time. That's what it translates to in hours. And then at that point, I divided it by 250.5 days, which is 350 days in a year minus weekends and minus holidays. And so that's, that was divided by, those 152 hours, which equals 19 days, was divided by the 250.5, and that gave me a .6067. And then you multiply that by 10 days in a pay period, 10 working days in a pay period, and so you get 6.067 hours accrued each pay period for this leave time. And then as the, as the years, as a person's years of service increases, so do those hours, and so obviously will the accrued pay time. And so we also discussed it, a work session to limit those hours, because after 21 years, an employee could earn 1,240 hours of leave time. And so we, we talked about limiting it to 720 hours that can be carried over to the next year, and that's essentially 90 days. And there was some discussion that the 90 days would be a nice safety net, it's short-term disability, if you will, so if somebody is hurt, that 720 days would go towards their recuperation and kind of a short-term disability provided in hours for employees. And so another part of the discussion needs to be, is if, when we transition to PTO, we have staff that have many more hours than 1,240 hours, and so what do we do with that? And it's a huge financial liability to any government entity, and so there are a number of things you can do. You can pay them outright, and give them a time, a year, or a specific time to use as much as possible, or if, and then whatever's left over, that can be forfeited. Or you can agree to pay out at a retirement. If there's some employee willing to retire, then that could be paid out before the end of the year under retirement. I mean, there's any way you can structure that, so we can get this, everybody on the same page with the paid time off program. Any questions?
And you say you've met with all the employees, and...
Yes, and explained this whole program to them, so they're very well aware of it.
How do they feel about it? Are they...
I think for the most part, they were favorable towards it. There's a lot of concern, of course, for the hours they've already earned, and what's going to happen to those hours.
I think that's a, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
That's one of the concerns that I had heard throughout our organization and throughout some of the other city employees is that this benefit for sick time had been developed years ago there, and it was supposed to be a benefit for the employees and for the city to retain the employees and things like that there, and I think that we all understand the liability of that and to put an end to that, you know, I think I understand that, but the concern is about the accumulated sick hours there that have been accrued over the years and stuff like that. I think in my, in my police department alone, there's almost 4,600 hours of sick time that's on the books right now.
And some staff, you know, can, there, how we did it in St. Anthony, too, was either they took retirement, there was an end date a year from when it was implemented, and you would take and use all of the old sick and vacation hours prior to starting to use your newly accrued PTO hours. Some folks took retirement if they decided that that wasn't good enough. There's any way that, you know, there are a number of ways that it can be fashioned and organized.
So there needs to be a little bit more work done on this.
Yeah, yeah, and that's the only piece that I need, you know, some feedback on, and other cities have just, this is it, you're done. Other cities have paid it out, right, this is it, you're done. Maybe a combination of both, maybe during, you get a year's grace to use up all of the accrued sick and vacation time. You can roll it into PTO. Again, there are some limits that, you know...
Yeah, I can understand with, you know, like Fran's position before in the police department, when, when she couldn't take time off in the transition, and there's times that the police department minimum, you know, have to have staff and they can't, so I think there's somewhere we need to work out with something that's earned a benefit to be fair, if we move forward, but we gotta do something with that, because there are some times that, again, manpower, the vacation could be denied, and it wouldn't be right if they can't take it to lose something.
Yeah, because they've earned it.
Right. Right.
One issue of consideration there, I know a nearby community near Richmond there switched over to PTO a year or two ago there, and one of the things that they did is take whatever accumulated time that the person had on the books there, they actually put that into a special account there. It didn't increase at any point or whatever like that, so what you had in that account stayed in that account there, and was, and is paid out similar to what the city of Amory has on the books there right now, and then any other sick time was, any PTO that you would accumulate there, they're similar to what Kim had come up with there, but to pay out of that is significantly less if you separate and stuff like that, so, I mean, I think that it, that was some resistance there, but I think even the unions eventually bought out of that, and certainly that's a consideration as well there, because that would be something that I'd be negotiating with our league.
No, it won't.
It won't? Okay.
No, it's not subject to negotiation, it's, right now, unions can only bargain wages, they can't bargain paid time off or vacation or health insurance or any of those things anymore. I can remove that, they can just bargain their wage, so.
I'm sure, though, that they would appreciate any consideration.
Exactly.
And that's just what I was gonna say.
Having said that, I'm sure that they would appreciate...
And then, you know, maybe, I don't know if they, Kim, but for people that have the time that aren't even ready to retire, is there anything that maybe can be worked out for like our health savings accounts or something like that, that...
And that was a call that I was going to make to Mike.
I know there's a limit, but maybe if, if, you know, rather than they have to pay their portion, possibly that be in lieu and that go towards whatever, you know? I know there's limits on it, but I'm just saying, I know there's a portion the city pays and that the employee has to, but maybe that would be, you know, they could, whatever.
Or maybe even flex time, if somebody has a surgery of one sort or another that they've been considering, it's kind of elective, and they could use that money towards doing that as well.
The issue is, as much as any is, that you mentioned, 4,600 hours of sick time accrued in your department, obviously you don't need that much sick time. If you can, with five employees or six employees, accrue almost 5,000 hours of sick time, besides the liability issue, then we need to do something. And I think the PTO will do that, and it allows employees to take time off without a reason. You don't have to, I mean, if you want a day off, you call the boss up and you say, "Hey, I need tomorrow off." Why? I want to sleep in? Doesn't make any difference.
Doesn't matter, yeah.
Well, you know, too, I mean, we do still have in our personnel manual, that the time off still has to be approved by their department head, they still have to put in for it and give notice, so...
But that, that, in reality, is very rarely ever...
Denied.
Denied. I mean, somebody needs a day off, they need the day off, it's not...
Right. And the major problem with the traditional accrual of earned time is the sick time, that you couldn't take it for any reason but when you're sick, and, you know...
Now you'll be able to.
Yeah. If you need a mental health day, you can take it.
The other thing that was brought up, too, is that if you can accrue 90 days, which is 720 hours, basically, that for any illness or any reason that the city's long-term disability kicks in, I mean, we also provide that long-term disability, so there is no gap coverage like in Medicare or something like that, you're, you're pretty much protected for the long term, and so on, so...
But it is nice to have that for the short term, if you do break a leg or you're seriously injured.
Yep.
So this is an ongoing discussion and project. Fran, you've...
Well, I guess, it was my understanding, it was the council's intention before, and they had, this has been talked about at committee meetings, and then the council, I believe, last month wanted to implement this by the first of the year. If these things aren't resolved, obviously we're not going to be able to do that, so just so there's a plan B in place of, depending upon how you want to implement it, but, you know, I'm bringing that up because the staff kind of, you know, our payroll HR department kind of needs to know where they're at, and I'm not rushing anything, because anything that is done can be made retroactive, certainly addressed at that time, so...
So the main issue is figuring what to do with people that are over the time? That's, we haven't concluded.
Yeah, I think that everybody who's talked to me, that I've talked to amongst the staff, that appears to be the main concern is, what's going to happen to the time that I have on the books? And if I have more than 720 hours on the books right now, what happens to that time?
And how many employees are we talking about with more than 720 hours?
I believe three or four.
Yeah, I think there's four.
Again, say, public works, that's three employees.
So maybe six.
Over 20 years, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, over 20 years, but not, they don't have 700, over 700 hours of sick time?
Yeah, there's three of them that do.
Three of them do.
Yes, three of them, and then one of them, too.
And we don't want, we're, since we're not in closed session, we probably don't want to talk about individuals.
No, 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 for sure.
But otherwise, yeah.
Why, there was a closed session on the agenda, and that's why it would be suitable, if you did want to talk about it in closed session, because it's a subject that is very closely intertwined with individual people.
But otherwise, for the most part, other than, the idea of PTO seemed to be from everybody like that, because then they could use their time all you want, basically.
Right.
It's just don't want to lose it there.
But it's how are we gonna structure that?
What's gonna happen to that?
The old time accrual that's going to be over the 720...
When is our January meeting? What day?
Third.
Third?
Yeah. Isn't it?
We should be able to handle it, I would think.
Yeah, I think, yeah, because the basic, the meeting, if we know we like the structure of that, is just what options, and that employee's gonna have some options, someone wants to retire, the retire, somebody wants, that doesn't, you know, if they can use for health or use for something else, to structure something that they have an option of what...
Yeah, and I will look at all of them that, you know, keep them as whole as possible. I have never liked the idea of, once somebody's earned something, taking it away.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do we, do we need to vote on item 12, conversion to paid time off in general? And then you work out the details? Are you looking for council approval on that item?
Well, it, it sounds like you're not ready to act on it yet, so it's on the agenda to act on, if you wish to act on it, you don't have to act on it, or you can, you know, act on it that, you know, the intent is to implement it as the first of the year once some things are finalized. That's totally up to you, you can table it and tell January if you want to, when it's ready to be finalized. That's up to you.
It sounds like a lot of the details between Kim and you are, have to work out with the employees, so why couldn't we adopt it contingent upon those items being?
A comfort resolution, if you will.
Yeah, something like that.
I guess I'm still not clear.
Yeah, we are going, we like the idea, but.
I don't know what, yeah, I'm still, I'm not clear what it is you want to do.
So I think it's basically that, yes, this is the plan moving forward, the only thing in the detail is the options for the employees, that, that what time they've earned, there's something that they're.
There's a bucket or some way of handling that.
Some way of handling that. And it's just that we don't know the different options, you gotta look at the possibilities or what, what they are for the employees that are affected, and then, you know, but the fact that PTO seems to be, that seems good, we just gotta make sure that the people don't, are compensated for what they've earned. In some fashion, we just gotta figure what the options will be.
I was just listening, my question would be, are you, within your, if you make a motion this evening to do that, are you leaving that discretion on what ultimately to do to city administrator, or on the third, is the council gonna want to revote on what the options?
On what options?
I think we'll, we'll want to revote on the options.
Right.
I, I mean, I don't, I'm comfortable leaving it with the city administrator, but she shouldn't have to take all the heat for doing this.
So in other words, yeah.
This is, you know, what I mean, it's, it's a council decision that was.
So isn't, is there the availability of the motion on switching the PTO, have a meeting prior to then or third, then while the options of a chance to take back to the employees, then on that meeting we'll say, now everybody who's over, they have these options, maybe your department heads or whatever, and then that will take care of the time they earned?
I know.
Thinking about that, or are you thinking of all one thing on the third?
I'd like to do it on the third, personally.
Don't we meet next week?
No.
That makes it cleaner.
No, this is a meeting.
No, we, we could end up having, having finance and having the whole council meet there if that's.
Oh, we can do this. Oh, okay, okay. And I, I, you know, like the idea, and I think, you know, that gives, the discussion has been really good, and it gives the staff an impression that the council is agreeable, we just need to finish that final piece, make a decision on, on how we're going to treat what they've already earned.
Yep.
So that they, there's, they remain whole. So we can.
So what was your comfort resolution, Mr. Van?
Just to stay, say, state that the, that the council is in favor of the proceeding with the PTO time, as previously discussed with both council and the employees, and we will be available for a final decision on the 4th of January.
Third.
Is that reasonable?
Third? Yeah.
Then, then we got time to talk to the, any folks that are involved and come up with the.
And I, you know, during that time, too, I can call another staff meeting or two, whatever we need, and, and talk with staff about how, you know, what they see as fair and.
For most of them, it would be just the four or whatever employees are over the 720 hours, right?
Right, right.
And then maybe they can give some options, and you can see if it's a feasible thing that we can do.
Right, right.
The ones that have, and then they can ask them to say, let's see, you know, some of them may say, can they use more vacation or more time the rest of the year and use it that way, or whatever, to get it rid, you know?
Yeah, because things are slow right now because of the holidays coming up, so that might be a good idea as well, if, you know, you don't leave the department stranded. But we can certainly talk about that, I can talk with the department heads and see what their thoughts are on that.
Okay. I'll second the motion that Rick made.
The comfort resolution.
The comfort resolution. Whatever it is. So basically, we're really not voting on this until January 3rd or whatever.
Just adding our, our.
That's the support, the plan, what's gonna move forward. And then, so employees can feel some comfort, too, not wondering what we're doing, until January 3rd, you know that this is the plan, and we're gonna work with trying to get something.
Get a result, yeah.
Right, so they know where they stand.
Okay, all of those in support of Rick's comfort motion.
Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. I think there's nothing else on the agenda. We do not have a meeting in December, so we will be meeting back here on January 3rd, and I would like to publicly announce, yes, I'm running for mayor. Thank you. Move to adjourn?
So move. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.